That's what he wanted to do initially.
All right, well, it looks like I got a few people here tonight, so I'm going to call the Thursday, November 13th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:00 PM here, off all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, there were some agendas up on the pedestal, if anybody needs one, otherwise we'll move on through the agenda tonight. I would look for an approval of the agenda, if I could get a motion, so moved. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, is there any discussion around the agenda tonight, or any additions or subtractions? Hearing none, I call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving on to our next item on the thing, we have the meeting minutes from October 9th, 2025, I know there's one adjustment that a couple of us saw, is there anything else? If we could call for that, that'd be great, otherwise I'd call for a motion with the adjustment.
Call for a motion to adjust based on absent members.
Nelson was present, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we will strike that from that, is there any other adjustments to the minutes?
None.
Hearing none, I call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
With adjustment.
With the adjustment.
Perfect.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, we will move on to the department, the commission liaison, and any other reports tonight, who would like to go first?
Mr. Chair, I'll defer to city administrator, we didn't have a city council meeting on Tuesday night, so nothing new to report.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and commissioners, I've been giving you a few updates along the way regarding our well three project, I have a little image here before you, it doesn't look like much, but trust me, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this here, the majority of it obviously is underground, but good to see the building go vertical, soon they'll be starting the rest of the brickwork, you can see that they've got the masonry in pretty good order here, so look to have this finalized in early '26, so be a good project for the city.
Awesome, very good, it sounds like there might be some staffing changes too, or eliminating some positions in the city to it?
Yep, the city council did approve a change here that we made, so.
Okay, are there any other, like, do we foresee any more cuts coming or anything within the city?
Not at this time.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Is there any other comments? Hearing none, we will move on to the visitor and public comments section, all right, I want to make this clear, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission with questions or comments on issues that are not part of the agenda tonight, so if you have something on the coming up agenda item, we'll talk about that then, if you have something you'd like to speak about now, just please keep your comments to under three minutes, please. All right, seeing none, we'll move towards the public hearing here, Scott, you want to kick us off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we have an application from Richard Zimmerman, along with John Junko, the owner of the property, it's for a conditional use permit for a cannabis retail dispensary at 14303 Sixtieth Street North, the application also has been, an application has also been received for amendment to the comprehensive plan, as well as amendment to the proposed land use map and zoning map, the property is currently designated as residential business transitional on the proposed land use map, the applicant has applied to change that classification to commercial, so again, that's for the comprehensive plan, the property is zoned RB, residential business transitional district, and the request is to rezone to B2 general business district, cannabis businesses are not allowed in the residential business district, but are allowed with a conditional use permit in the B2, that is why they're looking to rezone and to change the comprehensive plan designation, so that they can apply, which they have, for the conditional use permit for the retail cannabis business, section 1413 of the city code regulates the operation of cannabis and hemp businesses, and section 401.18 of the zoning ordinance addresses the zoning requirements, and we'll go through those, Mr. Zimmerman has provided a project narrative for the request, both for the changes to the land use and the zoning, as well as the cannabis conditional use permit, adjacent to the property, of course, is Sixtieth Street, Highway 36 to the north, a property with a vacant house exists to the east, residential property to the south, and residential business to the west, as I indicated, a comprehensive plan changes is required, properties along Sixtieth Street North, both to the east and west of the subject property, are designated as residential business transition, so there is a little strip of land, I mean, the maps that were in the package, the colored maps, I think, shows very well the proposed land use map, and then the zoning map, and the differences there, so you can see that there's that strip of the proposed land use, existing land use in that checked area along Sixtieth Street, with that property on that easterly side of Old Field Avenue North, the report goes through some of the goals, policies of the comprehensive plan, again, when you look at these type of changes, you look at those goals and policies, you look at the map, and does the, what does the goals and policies of that land use plan provide for us, and I picked out those I think that are relevant, based upon the existing land uses, in particular, the low density, single family residential to the south and to the west of this property, the proposed land use change is not justified, there was a reason that that was set up in previous comprehensive plans, to provide that buffer from Sixtieth Street to those residential neighborhoods that developed to the south, so there was, there was a plan, as part of this plan, to provide that buffer, again, we adopted a lot of these, or annexed a number of these properties many decades ago, with some of those existing uses, so again, I think they wanted to memorialize in the comprehensive plan, the fact that this area should provide a transition to the south, and that I think reflects very well in the map, as well as the comprehensive plan, there's also a section on land use compatibility that says, or at least my comment, the use of the subject property for commercial retail business does not provide a reasonable transition from that low single fam, low density, single family neighborhood to the south, and the Highway 36 corridor to the north, really, again, was designed as a buffer, the zoning amendment, the one unfortunate thing is that the land use map and the zoning map don't necessarily conform side to side, Greg said, there is the property to the east that at one point was zoned B2, so that if you went to buy the property, you'll see the old clinic building, the Junko clinic building, the subject property, and then directly to the east of that, there is an old house that was a business also, and that had been at some time designated as B2, so there's a little bit of incompatibility, and as I state in my report, that that's something that, as part of the comprehensive plan, you know, update, we do them every 10 years, we'll be looking at that again in 2027, 27, 28, or 2028, we should probably focus on that, or there could be, you know, a small land use study done before that time, if we wanted to move forward with that, because we do have this property that is not occupied, the property next to it is not occupied, we have the house pause, which is, you notice the cul-de-sac, so the house pause and the empty lot, so there's going to be some transition or to, of use in those, maybe not of use, but of businesses at least, and it's probably worthy of some discussion down the road. So, in terms of the conditional use permit, then if there is a decision by the city to re-designate in the land use plan, as well as change the zoning map, we also have to consider the conditional use permit tonight, and the applicant has received a preapproval from the Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management for a cannabis business license, overall, the application in that respect was pretty complete, and pretty much follows the completeness that we've had for other cannabis requests, but in looking at the criteria for a zoning amendment, conditional use permit criteria, the very first one says, relationship to the specific policies and provisions of the municipal comprehensive plan, well, we know that that is not consistent at this point, and does require that amendment, but other than that, overall, the, I guess you could argue that in some of these, with the criteria for impact on the surrounding area, in support of the, what I said about the comprehensive plan, I think there is that disconnect, to have a commercial use, and it could be a fairly intense commercial use, right on the corner of Old Field and Sixtieth Street North, where you've got single family, almost directly, well, directly to the south, and then across the street on the other side of Old Field, so with that, I won't go through a lot of the cannabis business criteria, all that's been pretty well covered, as I said, they're complying, at least what they have indicated in their application, that they will comply with all of those criteria, parking is also consistent, they're not changing really anything to the site overall, they'll repave the parking lot if they move forward and so forth, so the staff has indicated that because of the reasons in the criteria, both in the zoning ordinance, as well as in the comprehensive plan, we would recommend denial of this request, both for the land use comprehensive plan change, for the zoning map change, and then for the conditional use permit, any questions? Jake has the site plan up, also, and if we want to transition over and look at the detail of the zoning map, and the, there's some pictures of the site.
I did have one question in regards to parking.
Okay.
It's indicated that there will be eight stalls, two handicap, and there should be a number of six or fewer employees on premise during retail operation hours, allowing, if there's six employees on premise and two handicap stalls that need to be open or are not in use, that would bring us down to zero stalls.
Right.
So I'm wondering if there's any further employee parking?
I would assume that additional parking could probably be carved off to the back of that property, so I don't see that as a big issue.
Okay.
In terms of.
And Commissioner, we do have the petitioner here this evening, and he'll be able to answer questions.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions, yeah, any other questions for Mr. Richards? All right. I don't remember how to do this right now, so we'll go on, and we will open the public hearing, the public hearing is an opportunity for you to come and address the commission and ask your questions or state your comments, please keep your comments to under three minutes, and then we'll let the petitioner talk at the end, if that makes sense, and write your name on the piece of paper, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing, I don't, do I need a motion to open the public hearing, or can I just open it?
I think you can just open it.
I think I can just open it, so we'll open the public hearing at 6:14. Who would like to go first?
We don't bite.
If no one wants to address the commission, we can have the applicant come talk too.
Come on up.
Come on up, please just introduce yourself and state your name and address for us, please.
And sign the paper.
Okay, in that order?
Yep.
My name is Cheryl Johnson, and I live on Odell Avenue 5904, we have four houses in that cul-de-sac, and we've been there for eight years, and the trophy shop, I don't think was even open at that time on the corner, so my neighbor told me that you guys were talking about the trophy shop, so now I'm surprised to find out it's with the abandoned houses, which I think is fine, but maybe not for other people, but I just wanted to make sure, you know, I have an autistic grandson, I live with three small grandkids, one's autistic, and my, my daughter and my son-in-law, and we always, we have a lot of cars coming through this cul-de-sac, there's no sign that says no outlet, and we also have a disabled child, so I've been meaning to work on that, so I thought this would be a good time to maybe work on that, just because I know how many people race through there, and they get, they like, get mad because they went into, in there, and they have to go all the way around, and so they speed, you know, and my six-year-old, you know, really doesn't pay attention too well, so, I mean, I think he's out there alone, but, so I just wanted to check on that, and when would this all begin, or when would the business open?
We'll find out from the applicant here shortly, we can ask that question for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we can make note with the city to maybe get a sign, because that's a city road, so that's probably something we could make a note of, right?
The no outlet?
Yeah.
Would be lovely.
Well, we'll make a, we'll make a note for the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anybody else?
First comment?
Just remember to state, state your, oh, new pack, I got a pack, I can solve that problem, this one works. I hope it works.
My name is Bob Shocker, I live on 5876 Old Field Avenue, halfway down to Frontage Road, and I've noticed a lot more traffic lately, and just keep going faster, I am for any business opening up in that property, I am concerned about the traffic, and traffic control, and any future changes for traffic control, I think the owners of the business should pay partial of any changes to traffic control, and I haven't seen a conditional permit yet, and everything that's in it, I know there's some parking and verbiage in there and stuff, and like, no deliveries to take place on Old Field Avenue, no delivery trucks, so possible speed bumps in the future, I don't know how traffic is going to change, but all the dispensaries that have been approved are going to be approved in this area, are all surrounded by commercial property, this is the only one that has residential right behind it, there's only the Frontage Road, and the only other road is our Old Field, so that's what I'm concerned about, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, appreciate it. Anyone else? Otherwise, I'd have the applicant come. All right.
Hey, I'm Jameson Saul, live on 5925 Old Field, which is the property directly to the south of the projected business, keep it short, just wanted to say I don't have any concerns with that business being right next door, so I thought I'd put that out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very, thank you. Anyone else? Does anybody know, how long's the building been empty, before you have the applicant come up, does anybody know?
Maybe the owner would know.
Yeah.
Couple years.
Okay.
Three years.
If you want to, are you the owner? Yeah.
Is it okay for me?
Yeah, please address the commission, I was just curious.
I wanted to say that.
Say your name, please, sir, your name and address for us, please, for the record. Sir, your name and address for the record, please.
John Junko.
Thank you.
And I own the practice building and the house right behind it to the south, and when the planner was doing his intro here, I thought I heard him saying that the house to the south is residential, and we need a buffer to the business to the north, well, the house to the south is zoned RB, it's not zoned residential, and it's been RB for years, and it is the buffer to the business to the north, that business, that's been a commercial site since 1964, and I asked at one point, maybe 20 years ago, about, I realized what the zoning was, and I said, shouldn't it be commercial, and I looked up at the city here, and they said, well, no, it's okay, if you ever need it, then just let us know, and we'll rezone it, and, but the whole point is, is that, how is the, that building, it's on a commercial strip, supposed to be, that's supposed to be the buffer to the neighborhood from what, I mean, if that, if that's zoned RB, what's it buffering, the highway, you know, we were a busy business, we had 30, 40 people in there a day, and never had any trouble with the neighborhood, or with, as far as I know, you know, I worked in there since 1976, and I, Mr. Zimmerman is a fine guy, and I think he'll be an asset to the neighborhood, and I, it pretty much, if it's, if it's RB, I realize what that means, but the house behind is the buffer, and I swear, I heard you say that it wasn't buffered to the south, and it is, and.
The house, just to clarify, the house currently is used for single family purposes, right?
Well, right, but when I lived there, I ran my business out of it, I mean, it could, what could it be used for, and I'm just saying, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just saying, I didn't know if you were aware it was RB, because I didn't hear that in the intro.
Yes.
So.
The map shows it.
And I'm fine if the perspective tends to be an asset to Old Park, I don't think traffic's an issue, it's traffic's so bad out there now anyway, that, I don't know, it's not going to be impactful, you know, I look up and down that road, where the cars are backed up from one stoplight to the next every day, and up and down that commercial strip, it's a commercial strip, my point of view is, is every piece of property on that Sixtieth Street should be zoned business, if people want to make it business, I mean, why, why should there be any spot there that isn't, if considering the historic usage of that area, you know, that was Baytown before it was Old Park, you know, and a lot of this is, I guess you'd say it was inherited from previous councils, and they just never did it, I, why, I don't know, but.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name's Chris Meyer, I live at 5901 Old Field, three houses, or two houses down from these guys, and I just wanted to say, I agree, that this will be a benefit for our community, I've lived there for 50 years, I've never noticed any difference in traffic, once the clinic closed down, and I don't see it, it's going to change any different from that business being in there, I think it'll be good there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say.
Yeah, appreciate it.
My name is Lois Khan, sorry, slow, and I live at 5885 Old Field, which is right next to Chris, so we're four doors down, and I, I don't see a problem with it at all, to me, it would be no different if they put a liquor store there, or any other business, it's not going to affect our street, I don't think the traffic will increase, I think the traffic on the Frontage Road will increase, but not on our road.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would the applicant like to address the question now?
Thank you.
Just state, state your name for us, please, sorry. Just state your name for us, too, for the record, so it's on the recording.
Richard Dick Zimmerman.
Thank you.
I'm the applicant. Let me give you a little history on my background here. I've been in business in this area since 1978. My partner and I owned, opened up Settlers Wines and Spirits then, which is the old Advantage or, uh, Auto Parts store now, across the street from Walgreens. My father-in-law was Bob Poole, who owned the Ford dealership. So we owned all that property, and we also owned the Erickson-Pope's gas stations. Andy, my partner, and I operated the liquor store until the late eighties, and then he and I separated or branched off. I took the gas stations, and then he took the liquor store. And then I built a Holiday Station that's out on County Road Five, just north of Cub Foods and that strip center. Um, in 2000, um, I got divorced and sold off all the businesses, and then did a few other things. And then in 2013, my wife and I bought Stillwater Trolley, and I've owned and operated the trolley company since that time. So I'm not a stranger to this area. In fact, my wife, former wife's grandpa, was the first business up on the hill. It was the very first business to come up on the hill from downtown Stillwater. My son and I were lucky enough to receive one of the lottery picks to open up a cannabis retail store in the state of Minnesota. This is Troy, my son. Troy has extensive background in this business. Uh, he's, lives at Phoenix. He's worked in the wholesale end of the business. He's worked in the retail end of the business. And a good friend of his, uh, is a grower in California, and he worked a couple of years there. So he has extensive background in the business. He's not a stranger to it. Um, like I said, I've operated a liquor store for 17 years. I understand the legalities that you're dealing with here and the type of operation it is. I think they kinda parallel each other a lot. Um, you know, you, you need to have age restrictions and the various other things. So I contacted John, uh, about two months ago. I noticed, or had, I knew that the property was vacant and empty and thought it'd be a good location. So he was receptive, and here I am today, uh, asking for your approval to rezone the property and, uh, allow us to operate as cannabis, um, retail cannabis store. The things I've noticed on Oak Park Heights, Stillwater, since going into business in 1978, obviously the highway. It now services over 40,000 cars a day, go up and down Highway 36. We live in it, we know. When Walgreens came in and took over the Bradshaw-Hoggi Funeral Home Lot, I'm sure that had to be rezoned. I don't think they had an issue. I would look at the Blue Bell Hair Salon and the Valley Trophy as businesses along the service road. They're commercial businesses. They rely on customers come in, those customers pay for their services. We're no different. We'd be no different than what they are. As you look at the back end of the old Herberger Mall area, when Sloggers had that mall, changes can be made, and a lot of times for the better. When they vacated that road on the backside of the mall area so the cars couldn't go back there, I'm sure that was a decision by the council to do that. And it was a good decision. If you look at the strip center, that's just a little bit east of the site we're looking at, that has the bait shop in that end, and then Napa Auto Parts, there's homes directly behind there. And they, they, they got zoned commercial. So I see this as a great commercial piece of property. And why, when you have 40,000 cars a day going up and down that highway, that that's not commercial property? And you have a little slipper of land that you're gonna say, you can't put, you can't have commercial businesses in there, or the type of businesses we're looking at. So, we would ask for your consideration. Do you have any questions or need?
Uh, do we wanna go back to the question asked previously of when would you anticipate opening for business?
Uh, we would shoot for the late spring of, of 2026. So, um, the building has to be redone inside. Um, we would start on that immediately, but we, we shoot for late spring of 2026.
Would you be willing to help accommodate traffic control?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, I, I've dealt with that in all my businesses, and it, it's important. I mean, I understand that.
From a visual standpoint from the highway, obviously, that's gonna be the, the key to get people in the door driving by. There's the commentary in here about removing vegetation. And only in a small example of a sign up on the wall, do you guys have any intention to have posts somewhere closer to the road to get-
Yeah, we, we would have a freestanding sign up front. That is on the plan.
Yep.
And then we'd have a sign on the building, but that's all we'd have. We're not gonna look like Mr. Car Wash across the-
That's not Oak Park Heights.
Or the tobacco shop down here.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So, one of the, uh, what, what about the parking, the employee parking?
That would be to the backside of the building, which Scott noted. There's plenty of room back there to put employee parking.
Okay, great. How many employees do you anticipate hiring?
I would say four to six, depending on the time of day. And, you know, you, on weekends, you'd probably have a few more people on, on the floor.
And, and this facility would only be dispensing? It wouldn't be growing or manufacturing, it would just be dispensing?
Correct.
So then, Mr. Richards, does that parking comment, so we say we have a square footage per stall? We're indicating six, they're bringing eight. But then, what I'm hearing is that there's, the employees would be behind the building, behind the garage, behind the ADA spaces.
There would be, uh-
Commercials in the front.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Zimmerman, but, uh, to the south of where you see those disability stalls, uh, you could add additional-
Right, so does that need to be dictated in part of their application? Because then realistically, they're not asking for eight, they're asking for more than eight.
Then we would have to take a look at that, in terms of, yeah.
We would amend the application.
Yeah.
There is room for more parking.
Yeah, it's already paved.
We can come back and- When the applicant has done, I'll, I'll weigh in, and I have some commentary on some of this as well, just-
Mm-hmm.
When you're ready for it.
Yep.
I have one more comment.
Do you want to give that commentary when we close the public hearing?
Um, either way, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Uh, my comment would be that hours of operation might be different than the former business that was in there. So will there be adequate lighting if your business is open until 10:00 PM?
Yes, yes, well-
For vandalism, theft, all of those types of things?
We'll have cameras, we'll have adequate lighting.
Requires that breach dispensary as part of the security protocol.
Got it, thank you.
And the lighting wouldn't, you don't think the lighting would affect the neighborhood? I know that had come up on one of our other applications where the auto parts, or the, uh, repair place down by Holiday was getting, adding a parking lot, and there's a apartment complex there. So I was concerned about the lighting by the apartment complex.
We'd have the lighting so it goes down, not project out. So that it beats strictly for that parking lot area.
And there is a substantial headcount going through there, so it might get you shit.
Yep.
Anything else for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay, do I need to say anything as the applicant?
Uh, you're fine, you're sure there, the records are there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff?
Sure, thank you. City Attorney Kevin Sandstrom, for any of those that haven't met me. And I'm here primarily tonight because I scheduled to do a training later this evening on zoning and land use-related decisions. But it's fitting that this application is on, because this actually provides a fairly interesting legal issue for the commission to decide upon. But what you're, because what you're talking about tonight is a, primarily first and foremost, an amendment to the comprehensive plan. That's the biggest overarching document and planning tool that governs the city. And, uh, one thing I just wanted to make note of here is certainly amendments to the comp plan are allowed and, and occur and are to be expected at times, and Mr. Zimmerman's not wrong about that. What I, I would impress upon the commission to consider, though, um, is, and this is not a right or wrong answer, because in, in large part, changes to the comprehensive plan are largely within the discretion of, of the city to decide what is best for the city. But if this comprehensive plan amendment is allowed, I think what you have to also consider is essentially what you're determining as a planning commission would be, as I think Mr. Zimmerman has kind of suggested, that really the intent of the entire 60th Street corridor should be purely commercial. That if any other property that's currently guided by the comp plan as an RV transitional zone property wanted to also rezone and, and change to a B2 business zoning, uh, regulation, they would likely be entitled to that, because the argument would be, well, you did it for this property that's on 60th Street, despite the fact that it's right next door to residential properties, and so why not all the others along 60th Street? And frankly, you may well decide that makes sense. And that, as Mr. Zimmerman's pointed out, traffic is gonna be primarily going up and down 60th Street, and it does already, because there are commercially zoned properties along 60th Street right now. And that traffic for these businesses is not likely to go down the side streets. Although, one of your members of the, the public here who commented, I think it was Cheryl Jensen, kind of indicated, you know, she lives on the next cul-de-sac down, and there's, you know, one of these kind of pseudo-business properties on the corner of, of that cul-de-sac as well, and is there gonna be an increased traffic? People mistakenly turning down their street and, uh, trying to find a, where to go, and they inadvertently turn down a street and have to make a U-turn or whatever. Um, and so, but you are ultimately, to make a decision here on what the overarching intent of the city's entire zoning structure is for these properties. This is not just about this particular property. It's about the RV transitional zone in and of itself and all the other properties along this corridor. And essentially, if you wanted to grant this application, I, I think you need to consider that other RV transitionally-guided properties along here probably would go the same way. Um, and, and we should expect that. Other properties may come in and ask for that same sort of consideration. And so do we want to essentially forego that RV transitional concept along 60th Street under the guise that this should just all be commercial? That there isn't really the, the sort of detriment that, uh, maybe was thought about or, or, you know, was the overarching concern when that RB's transitional zone was created and put next to these residential areas for their protection? Is that protection no longer needed? Have, have times and conditions changed such that a change to the comprehensive plan is warranted here? That's, I think, the decision first and foremost that you need to make. You make that recommendation for this property, understand that it's, it's likely, it's a necessary change to then that entire corridor on the Frontage Road. Um, and certainly, you've heard from several members of the neighborhood that say, yeah, we agree that, that there's not a big problem here of having this be a commercial property. Um, and Mr. Zimmerman's pointed out, you know, Valley Trophy and/or the Blue Bell Hair Salon as other examples. The other thing you need to consider, though, and understand is these properties that are currently guided by the comp plan and zoned as RB transitional, um, if they are all rezoned to B2 business district, any building that's on those properties right now can be torn down and built into whatever would be allowed in a B2 business district. They don't have to stay, you know, looking like little old houses that have businesses in them. They can be torn down and built into a gas station or liquor store or cannabis shops, whatever would be allowed in a business district. And so this is a, the larger, big-picture decision on what is appropriate for these properties, and not just considering this particular use on this particular lot, but from a larger perspective, any commercial use that would be allowed on any of these what are currently marked as RB transitional, but might be changed over to commercial. So I just want that to be clear in your considerations of the issues. But it, from a legal perspective, it's one of the more interesting things that a planning commission or a city council is asked to determine. And so you are actually, uh, you know, put upon with a fairly weighty decision here on what to do with this application.
Thank you for that. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Isn't this property in particular a little unique, that it does have that buffer in the back? Where if this became a business district, would that be even possible if there are no buffer properties throughout that corridor?
Well, and that was, uh, so I, I think there's a question on is the property directly to the south also RB transitional, and is it intended as a buffer as well in and of itself? Um, and the city administrator and I were trying to figure that out. Looking, the zoning maps are a little small, and I'm, I'm not entirely clear on that, and we'd have to zoom in-
The proposed land use directed to the south, the single-family house owned by Mr. Junko, is, uh, designated as low-density residential.
No, it's zoned RV.
But it's zoned RV, but the comprehensive plan indicates it as, as low-density residential.
So there, there's a, there's a slight discrepancy between what the comp plan says about that house and what the zoning map says about that house. Typically speaking, the law says, um, if there's sort of discrepancies exist, you're supposed to look to the comp plan first and foremost, and frankly, probably amend the zoning ma, map to conform it to the comp plan. So essentially, your comp plan says the intent of that house to the south was to be a residential home, not necessarily an RB transitional property.
And that's the same situation as the property to the east. So we have it designated as residential business, but it's Zone B2. That's why I suggested that whether we do a small land use study for this area or it just incorporate it, we wait a couple of years and do it as part of the overall comprehensive plan. It's a good, you know, you should look at it overall, not as just one parcel. That's why I'm saying, don't move forward with this, but let's, uh, let's, uh, give it a more of a look, a more detailed look than just one property by one property.
I would, um, if there's no more comments from the public, is there any more comments? Yeah, let's, let's do one more, let's do one more comments from the public, and then I would-
Thank you.
Uh, the zoning of that house behind you are predated by comprehensive plan. And I've never, I've been clueless that you ever had plans that wasn't okay. I talked to the city about, like I said 20 years ago, when I first realized what the zoning was. Uh, this all predates whatever you're talking about now. And that is a commercial corridor. Uh, I, you know, people can do what, I would suspect they can do what they want with their property, but, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in the piece that I own. And, like I said, I think it, every piece on there, people wanted it to be two, it should be. When you look at what, you know, that strip mall to the east, they didn't have any trouble. That was a, that was not zoned for a strip mall, and they did it. Uh, it, you know, I just, uh, it's, it's, it, you know, the, uh, comprehensive plan doesn't seem to match with the reality of the location. And I understand, you know, but if, if it's not a, you know, we were, we were a busy business. And we never had trouble with parking, we never had trouble with traffic, never had trouble with noise. Uh, I think Mr. Zimmerman is, knows what he's doing, and is, I mean, I think, I think he'd be the-
Thank you.
That's it. I, I don't know what else, what else can be done with that building. If, if, if you can't, uh, use it as a business that you would wanna use it as, uh, in, in that corridor. I mean, look at, all you gotta do, look at it. It's not, it's not a residential neighborhood anymore, you know? That was planted there right at Baytown, all the time. I don't know.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a clarification-
Mr. Chair, just a clarification, Mr. Junko asked what could it be used? And the medical offices and clinics, dental offices, professional offices, so those are business uses that are allowed as a conditional use in the residential business district. So there are uses that, you know, it doesn't have to be just residential because it's a residential business district. So there is that allowance for.
Mr. Richards.
But it seems no one's been interested in it for years.
What was it used for before?
Veterinary office.
Veterinary office. So it was a clinic.
Thank you. That was my question. Appreciate it, yeah. Yes, sir. Please state your name and appreciate it.
I'm the applicant's son. And just a couple of statements that I wanted to make. It's called the Highway 36 corridor, except for this one, two little properties. If you walk to the end of the driveway on that property, ended up 360, you're gonna see zero houses other than the one that I think should be condemned and burned to the ground. That's on the same property. There's not another house that you can see other than the Bell Salon, which is running business. And so, it's just silly to me as a simple guy that it's gonna be kept empty, vacant, an eyesore on the community, and a place where shady drug deals are probably gonna keep happening that night there. There's no, there's no way to see in. It's unlit, it's terrible. It's where you're gonna have the crappy drug deals going on. No offense, but that's, that's just the way I see it. And if it's a business corridor, let's do some business.
Thank you. Real quick.
Real quick.
Under three minutes.
Under three minutes.
After this discussion, I have another question.
Yeah, go for it.
I thank you for considering traffic. I have one more thing for you to consider. 36 runs east-west, you're right on the frontage road. Can you not put any signs on the east side of the building where it eliminates our street? Any advertising that you keep on spot away from the intersection? So when I look down that road, I'm not seeing any on something. Done deal.
I think, yeah, I think that's already in the plan, isn't it?
I don't believe that it would ever need to happen.
Yeah.
I don't see any way that anybody would keep going through there. Just, just.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public?
I got a question.
Come on up. State your name, please, sir.
My name is John Com. I live at 5885 Oldfield. My wife was up, so. You mentioned vandalism. I don't know about vandalism of the building, but that's building. But the house next door, there have been police calls, vandalism. The house is sat vacant. I've lived there eight years, nine years, going on nine years now. That house had been vacant before I moved in. Busted windows, vandalism, police calls, kids going in, reports of homeless people living in the building. You put a business next to that house, it's going to stop people wanting to go there because there'll be too much activity in that area. I have no problem with the cannabis shop going in there. The traffic going in and out, I think after a while it'll slow down. There'll be more traffic on 60th than probably on Oldfield. When you mention about a buffer, you want to buffer something, buffer 36, with the semi jake breaking going down 36. For those of you who know what jake breaking is.
Oh, yeah.
At a lot of hours of the daytime, morning, noon, and night. So. The buffer from that business to the residential neighborhood is gonna be very minimal if noticed at all.
Thank you, sir.
And I understand about the zoning, you know, I'd see no problem with zoning that whole strip there, it's commercial. Because you could get rid of that house that sat vacant for however many years, put something else there, whoever owns it.
Yeah, it gives.
You know, I mean, it's, it's an eyesore.
Is that what's called the ask questions?
Thank you.
He kind of, kind of, I was gonna bring up that kind of house that's sitting there vacant for long, and we were out in our backyard one time, and you could hear, there was kids over there breaking windows, and we actually called the cops on them, and they, like, they're heading down towards McDonald's, and sure enough, I happened to be going down to the gas station at the same time. But what is with, what is with that house that has been?
We, we don't know at this point in that. We can't help you with that. I can't help you with that. We're here to talk about this, this specific property and this one. I would recommend coming to the city council meeting, though, and asking them.
Yeah, and I get it, but.
All right. Anything else specifically relating to this property? That's all we can talk about tonight. All right. Hearing nothing else specifically related to this?
She's got, we've had a little chat here, and he mentioned that it should be brought to the public.
So you're saying that this is gonna change all these business residential transition, all these areas here, but wouldn't they have to get a special, you know?
I'm not saying that it will change then. I'm, I'm saying that essentially, if this application is allowed, that the same rationale would apply to all the other properties along 60th, the same sort of arguments.
If they wanted to act on.
Yeah, set a precedent.
We're setting a premises.
Set a precedent that likely other property owners who own those properties would come in and ask for the same thing. And so, not that it will automatically happen, or not that you're making that decision tonight. You're just making a decision based upon this one parcel on this one applicant's request. But the precedent that sets would apply in a similar fashion, because you can't make ambiguous decisions that don't make sense, and you have to be consistent. Otherwise, you'd be seen as making arbitrary and capricious decisions if you allow something for one property and you have a like property where you deny it. Correct.
Yep, exactly.
But, so why, if this is something that we want to do a land study on, why was it brought before us tonight then? If, well.
Because we have an active application.
You have a specific application from a property owner requesting this, so you have to make a decision on it.
And Mr. Richards, you make it sound like that's got a long process to do?
Well, the whole comprehensive plan process. But if you do a, a small, you know, study of just these properties, this residential business area, that would take a few months, probably.
Just to say, once we got approved, this day gave us an eighteen-month timeline to start, to get over.
Okay. Come up, we gotta use the mic for people watching on TV, sorry.
And this day, once you're, once you are drawn and approved to go over a property, you got an eighteen-month timeline, so that could catch them out, so let's even try.
Thank you.
Do you have applications elsewhere?
No, 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 just Minnesota.
Well, I understand Minnesota, but different properties.
No, 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 this is the only one. No, we're, we're not an investment firm, we're just.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for us before I close the public hearing?
I'd like to say one more thing.
All right, come up to the mic.
You know, as long as the attorney brought up the question of precedence, as far as what people might want to do with their property that they own on this commercial strip, maybe it would be setting a good precedent. That's what I would say. It would be sensible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I move we close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing, a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any additional discussion before we close the public hearing that we need from the applicants or anyone? All right. I would entertain a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. All right, so the public hearing is now closed, and we will discuss amongst ourselves what we've all talked about. You are all welcome to sit and listen. And then we will make a recommendation. I want to make it very clear that this council in Oak Park Heights only makes a recommendation to the city council. The city council is the decision-making body here. So if you're familiar with Lake Elmo, it's different. Here, we only make recommendations, we're not a deciding body. All right, so, um, let's go back to what we were just educated by our attorney. We have the property that's zoned business residential transitional, Mr. Richards, on Stagecoach. Those, that, that Stagecoach, on Stagecoach Trail there, that's that whole area that's the same zoning, same in the conditional use plan, right? In our, in our, in our plan.
So you're talking specifically about the property that we discussed and made the change for the condominium project?
No, no, down the road.
This is like the U-Haul property.
Down the road, on the same road. We allowed that new building to be built on, on transitional land. That looks like a commercial building, but it's on the same, it's, in the comprehensive plan, it's the same. And we allowed that to happen.
So that was for the audio business?
Correct.
Just to be clear.
Yeah. But it looks like a commercial building.
Right.
It is, it is a commercial building.
You guys are talking about two different things.
But it was primarily an office use, so that it met the criteria for a residential business condition.
Mr. Chair, are you talking Croyvue on Stagecoach?
Alchemy Sound.
No, Alchemy Sound.
Alchemy Sound.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alchemy was on 60th.
Which one's on Stagecoach, next to the?
That's the construction.
Next to the semi place.
Yeah, that's the construction.
Yeah, that's construction.
That's Croyvue.
Yep.
Croyvue is a.
U-Haul over there, too.
Is not.
Croyvue's a construction company that was just recently built here last, what?
Within the last year.
Yeah.
Croyvue looks like a business. It doesn't fit in medical, it doesn't fit with those requirements, but we allowed it to be put on that property without changing the zoning. I'm just asking for clarification, because we're talking about zoning changes.
Talking about the right property, that was correctly zoned.
The Siegfried.
The Siegfried.
Mr. Richards.
That was correctly zoned.
Okay.
That was correctly zoned.
Because that's transitional, that fits within the transitional, even though it looks like a commercial building.
It was, it's actually in a, I would have to take a look at the map.
That's what I'm looking at.
But it didn't, we didn't have a comprehensive plan or a zoning change. I believe that was just a conditional use for the type of use.
Correct.
I'll look.
Just, just check for me, because it looks like a commercial building, and on our map that we have in front of us, it looks transitional. These properties here, I don't disagree with the applicant in the neighborhood tonight, guys, that have said that the majority of these buildings are commercial already on that road. There's, what, three of them left that aren't on all of 60th, on both, both sides of the road? Right? The, when, what's our timeframe for when we're redoing the comp plan?
2027, 2028.
Yeah, by 28, at the end of 28, I think is the goal, to have it completed roughly.
So we're three years away from completing a comp plan that was developed and designed before we put in Highway 36, correct?
No, that's done every 10 years, and so it would have last been amended 10 years ago.
So when was 36 completed?
Six years ago.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the bridge?
Yeah, the bridge.
The bridge, you meant like 36 is.
The bridge, the bridge went in in 2019, 2018, right? When that opened, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
So the comp plan was developed before the bridge existed, which therefore meant no traffic. Or less traffic.
Well, no, it was all this funnel through downtown still.
I would say it was.
The lift bridge took one car, two cars at a time, and 36 is a major infrastructure. So we're seeing 40,000 vehicles across that bridge. Now, it didn't exist when this plan was put in place.
Okay.
So I think we need to take that into consideration, that waiting until the next plan may not make sense as far as recommendations, because a lot has changed in the last six years, and this plan is 10 years old.
But you would make an amendment to the plan, not the full.
I would recommend we make an amendment to slowly correct some of these things while the whole thing is going on, because it needs to be revised.
Now I'm following, yeah.
But I'm gonna speak big picture. We're not amending.
We're amending one property today.
It would be addressing these guys, then we gotta take this back and address the rest of the precedent, which we've already answered, Alchemy Sound. We gotta drill this back in and look at the recommendation that's in front of us right now.
But we can also recommend.
We can make.
An amendment to the comp plan.
Because we have to make a recommendation.
Pack that on to their.
No, they're two different things.
Correct.
They need a recommendation for this property for this comp plan.
Correct.
Right? That's all we're talking about today. If someone brings in another recommendation, that's fine. We're setting a precedence. We just have to understand legally, when you make a recommendation to amend a comp plan, we may be setting a precedence for the other one, two, three, four, five properties in the whole city that are in this.
And we've already approved another one.
And we've already.
So we've already started the precedent.
You got the one here, you got the one there, and you got the five there.
Yeah, but this one over here, we've already allowed things in. That was my question.
Now, I would say the precedence you're setting is probably primarily related to 60th Street as a corridor that's right along 36. I don't think you need to necessarily think about every, every single RB transitional property in the city.
Oh, okay.
You know, the ones that are similarly situated, which would be the ones right along 60th Street, which is a frontage road to 36.
Oh, I was kinda thinking it would be 58th Street as well, and Stagecoach, and, you know?
Could be, but, you know.
That's too deep.
We don't have to go too far down the.
It's only five, it's five properties we're looking at on 60th.
I would say if you want to do an overall look, that's part of the comprehensive plan. If you want to do, let's say, a small zoning comprehensive plan study, do just that strip of those five.
So, Mr. Richards, if, for example, tonight we said, hey, let's look at these five properties, what would the timeframe take to do that? Realistically, understanding that maybe our applicants are on a time crunch, and I want to be cognizant of being fair to our applicants as well as doing the right thing for the city. So there might need to be some research done. What would be a realistic timeframe?
Let's say, by the time you have the city council endorse it, you're talking maybe three, four months. But the one thing you have to remember is that we are on a development timeline, 120 days for this application. I would, even if you're going to do a small area study, I would still deny this and have them come back once the zoning, if it is changed, if the land use has changed.
And you said you have 18 months.
Remember, we're not supposed to ask them now, because of course it, but yeah, we have 18 months. Yep, yep. They would, you would move on to a different property if we took that one, correct? Thank you, sorry. All right. So we have, so I think the other thing to take into consideration, guys, is we have multiple from the neighborhood saying there's the abandoned building, it's a problem.
Correct.
I'm assuming we could look at some law enforcement records if we wanted to pull some stuff. It sounds like there's some stuff that exists with some calls.
There's no interest from doctors, vets, and whoever.
It's been vacant for three years.
Three years.
That's a long time in prime real estate, when you have no real estate in this whole city. Both of those things to me seem concerning.
Red flags.
Red flags. They're sitting there empty, and they're not gonna go away unless something changes. So that's what I have to say.
My one questioner, concern for the neighborhood is if it is changed from RB to commercial, let's say, would the neighborhood feel differently if instead of a single-story commercial use, a much larger commercial went in? Would that change any sentiment?
Well, I think if you look at the property of the east, we already approved a recommendation of city council, who I believe approved Alchemy Sound in that vacant lot, which is also in the zoning quandary, but we've already acknowledged the commercial change. So as you go from east to west, that was already approved, that's now a red block on our map, this would be the next one. And Alchemy Sound didn't have any pushback from the community either.
Yeah, it showed up.
And that was primarily an office use with service vehicles that were parked inside.
But they were talking about building a commercial building.
It's gonna look, it's not gonna look residential.
It's not gonna look like a house anymore.
It's a warehouse essentially, and so the traffic generated by a warehouse use with a small office component to it, I think that the thought process is, that's fairly similar to a vet clinic or, you know, medical clinic. And that's, the intensity of the effects on the neighboring properties was felt to be, I think, fairly minimal from that type of warehouse slash small office use as opposed to retail use, where you're expecting a lot of people coming and going, a lot of traffic. Quickly, yeah, quickly coming and going. Nobody's hanging out at the, at the cannabis shop for hours and hours, yeah. And although Mr. Junko indicated he had 30 or 40 people coming per day, you might have 30 or 40 people coming in a couple hours to a heavy retail business.[1718.32]
I think this is a great time to consider corrective action, plus Blake's comment about the corridor, it's a commercial strip. I feel like we would be pigeonholing ourselves to not create a commercial space there with respect to the residents behind. There's, there's risks there, of course, but we're pretty packed on development. This is a spot that we could open new doors. I don't see an issue with either of the aspects of the application.
And I like that it's a heavily regulated building.
Especially next to the vacant building.
Especially next to a vacant building and next to residential. Because if we put a gas station there in the future, not as regulated. If we put, I don't know, a convenience store, you buy trinkets, whatever, it's not regulated. This is going to be extremely regulated.
Cameras.
Cameras, security, like, it's going to be the last place you're going to have a problem, right? It's just going to be far more, it's going to be very controlled versus that property has...
Just remember, though, the B2 district, you change the land use and the zoning to B2, and all of a sudden, you can allow for all those uses. Again, the properties are too small to accommodate a quick trip, obviously, but that is a potential.
Help me understand the buffer, though. Because if you switch this to that type of use, do you no longer need a buffer?
Well, you don't have a buffer, then. This is what's...
We're taking the buffer away.
You're taking the buffer.
But we don't have a buffer in most of the city.
You're taking the buffer in terms of the fact it's a commercial use that isn't intensive. Residential business is much less intensive than a B2, which is our general business district, which is pretty wide open.
Got it, yep.
And to Mr. Junko's point, 36 is there, there is no buffer. You are the buffer, we're taking away the buffer.
I'm good.
I think I've said my piece.
Any other questions, comments? Questions for Mr. Richards, for staff? I would entertain a motion. Let's see how this ordered again.
Mr. Chair, do we want to break it up? We've got the comp plan amendment, three zoning, the CUP.
I would recommend, yeah, let's recommend, let's, okay, that's a good point. Let's, let's talk about the comp, I'd entertain a motion for the comp plan piece of the puzzle.
I would like to make a motion to adjust the comprehensive plan to accommodate their amendment.
So it's B2, correct, Mr. Richards?
If I could, please, slightly restate it for it. Motion to approve the applicant's request for a comp amendment to B2 zoning guidance.
What he said.
And you can probably package a zoning change at the same time, because they would kind of go hand in hand.
Yes, I would, would you accept that as a friendly amendment, packaging the two together?
I would accept that.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
I have a motion and a second to accept the applicant's recommendation to, or to application to change the comp plan and then adjust the zoning appropriately.
Yes.
Do we have any additional discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So is that unanimous? Jen, I'm afraid, I didn't hear you.
She said aye.
Yeah, it was unanimous.
I'd hear you, okay.
So, so we're going to send forth to the, we've, the first part of the puzzles, we're going to send forth to the city council at the next city council meeting, which they should see this on...
Do we, you have the conditional use permit, too?
Yeah. Yeah, we're not done yet, but the first part of this is going to go to the city council to ask for a change in an amendment to the current comp plan to adjust the zoning correctly. All right, so now we're going to talk about the CUP, the conditional use purpose, proposal for the land for this business. We need to talk parking?
But if it gets approved by city council to be adjusted, then they don't need a CUP, right? So doesn't that just completely...
They still need, for any...
They need it for the cannabis.
The B2 district requires a CUP. Now, the conundrum you've created is staff's recommendation was for denial, and so I don't think we have a set of proposed recommendations, as Scott has suggested, your planner, if and once the zoning's changed to B2, the conditional use process actually makes a lot of sense, and it's generally in conformance with what we'd expect. You do not have the typical written proposed draft resolution.
We don't have the draft resolution, but I did indicate that if the planning commission was favorable to that, here's a list of conditions for the conditional use permit. So that was in front of them.
Thank you. So page nine and ten, fourteen items, I think that's the typical coverage of...
The typical...
Ventilation, city arborist, lighting.
So I think, based on Mr. Richards' recommendations, if we're favorable, which we voted to be favorable for an amendment to the zoning, and we're still sending it before the council, we need to add in here, Mr. Richards, the parking adjustment for the staff, I think.
And traffic control.
And that the applicant will be willing to assist with traffic control costs if they arise for the neighborhood.
And he shook on lighting.
And no east, east-facing lights. So...
I think there was discussion, too, for example, of no neon signs or anything facing Old Field.
Yeah.
Which follow our, yeah, so I think we should just make sure that we put in the proper lighting restrictions for the signage.
Which, we already have the condition, I'll just beef it up.
Which we have all that up, so we just need to adjust that slightly a little verbiage there.
And parking is on, or parking and traffic enforcement is item ten.
Yep.
So I think we've already got lighting and traffic covered in the recommendation.
Oh, I do have.
The handshake on signage.
Yeah, which is fine, we'll put it in writing.
I think we've already covered all that stuff.
I apologize, I don't have Scott's report in front of me, I didn't print a copy of the packet. You know, one of the things that was somewhat unique here is the fact that there's kind of a hedge row of trees on the backside, and is there a condition that requires them to maintain those trees? They've said they don't intend to cut them down, but you might consider adding as a condition that they must maintain those as a buffer to the...
There's condition thirteen that says any removal of trees or changes to landscaping must be subject to removal and approval by the city arborist. So we already have a condition that if they want to remove anything, it's going to be approved.
So that's kind of leaving it to the discretion of the arborist as opposed to having a fixed and mandatory condition that says they must maintain a vegetative buffer on that side of the building to buffer from residential properties. You could mandate that as an ongoing thing as opposed to leaving it to the arborist.
You can make that change also.
Yeah, we should put a, we should make sure there's a buffer there, Mr. Richards, whether it's vegetative or wood.
Yeah, the ordinance will require it anyway, but it's good to put it in the conditions. Okay.
No, I'm sorry. All right, I would entertain a motion. We talked about some changes, I think, Mr. Richards put in. Is there anybody that would want to make a motion?
I butchered the last one, so someone else...
That's a lot of stuff to remember.
I'll take a whack at it if you want me to. Go ahead.
Here we go, the newbie. I so move to accept the proposed land use and zoning amendments with the additional adjustments we have discussed.
It's CUP, we're only on the...
We're not doing the land use, you got to remove the land use, this is only the CUP.
Recommend approval of the conditional use permit.
There we go.
With the changes, with all conditions in the planner's report, plus the additional conditions that have been discussed tonight.
So the motion on the floor is, we have a recommendation for the approval...
Of the CUP.
Of the CUP with all thirteen of...
Fourteen.
All fourteen of the, Mr. Richards, recommendations with the adjustments that we discussed around lighting, traffic control, parking, and...
Mandatory buffer.
Mandatory buffer between the residential. Do I have a second?
You have a second from me.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any additional discussion?
This was an interesting quandary. Thanks for your patience, everybody. This was a good one to think about and talk through, so I think this was about time this happened.
All right. I would entertain a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Hearing none, the motion is approved. So like I said, this will go before the city council next week on Tuesday. They are the final decision-making body.
Nope, not next week.
Thanksgiving week?
Yes.
Okay.
November twenty-fifth.
So they'll, they're the final decision-making body in the city of Oak Park Heights, so they will make decisions. I highly recommend you show up to that meeting, and we'll go from there. So thank you for your patience tonight.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
We'll keep moving on with our night, guys.
Can we propose new business now that we talked about?
Next, well, you can put it on next meeting. Let them...
Got to love a brain teaser.
Since you wouldn't let anybody talk about anything else, being new to the neighborhood, I heard rumors that the property next door...
Oh, yes, we'll be here.
Previously, the owners, they wanted to put an apartment building in there.
Oh, yeah?
And, no, this is, and I don't expect you to know that.